Please join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence. Blue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our name, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start today recognizing Dr. Lorene Valentino on her retirement. Is Mr. Bidak here?
Thank you. I was looking around for Dr. Valentino. Apparently, Dr. Valentino is not in the room at the time, so what was your wishes?
We can move on to Captain Meisner.
Okay.
And come back. And look at the smile on Captain Meisner's face.
A smile of anticipation, I think, more than anything. Am I talking?
No, let's talk.
All right.
Am I talking?
Very good. Well, I just, you know, want to thank the board for the opportunity that I've been given over these years, and particularly would like to, of course, thank Sheriff Whitman, and UnderSheriff David Whaley, and all of the men and women of the Sheriff's Department for the opportunities that they've given, and the friendship and fellowship and such. And at this point in time, you know, I came to a sudden decision that I had a calling in a different direction, and made the decision that that was a place that I'd like to move to and be able to do. So we're excited about the possibilities, and, you know, thank you for, you know, this recognition this morning, and being able to come before you, and, you know, just thank you for your work, and I wish you well in the future of Tulare County.
Thank you, Captain Meisner. We kind of went out of order. Sheriff Whitman?
He was hanging back. He wasn't sure what he was going to say.
I wanted to see what he had to say about it. I've tried to talk him out of it. I don't know what else I can do. And we've all tried to talk him out of it, and tried to keep him here. But he has made his mind up and made the decision, so we're obviously going to support him. His life is going to go in a different direction, and we applaud him for what he's trying to do. But before he leaves, I would like to make a couple of comments about Kevin. Kevin has been with us, as you all know, 24 years. But in that 24 years, he's become our doctor in the jails. He's become our expert. He's become our in-house expert. He's absorbed a lot of training, a lot of training on his own time. He was instrumental in designing and helping design the pre-trial facility, the swap program, the data reporting center, all those things Kevin played a major role in. And his expertise and his part of being a good loyal team is going to be missed. And I just wanted to tell Kevin in front of everybody here, we wish you well, and this is about the last chance you're going to get to change your mind. I'm talking about giving 30 days, and it's running out, but I think he's not going to change his mind. He happens to be going to the church that I also go to, who also hired Lieutenant Masterson about three weeks ago to work as a youth director. I feel like I'm going to a staff meeting now when I go to church. Kevin, congratulations on your retirement and your new direction in your life.
Kevin, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present you with our highest award. Thank you for your 24 years of service to the county. And I know that since you've been a longtime member of our family, that especially in youth services, we'll see you quite often. Thank you for your support.
Chairman, with all due respect, you went out of order again. I just wanted to go first. You know, we gave this plaque to Kevin. Kevin's been a member of the retirement board for, um, 15 years. But we presented this plaque to him last week at the time of his last retirement board meeting, but I asked if I could re-present it to him, and I saw Dave Keeler back there, I think, and Roland Hill, and maybe some of the other retirement board members are here. And I really wanted to do that, Kevin, just so that, to recognize that service that you've given to the retirement board. It's not easy. You've been very thoughtful and a great member of the retirement board, looking out for the interests of all Tulare County employees and the retirement employees with those funds. Not always easy to do. But I think it's worth mentioning, too, because you were sent there by your peers. And I always think that there's no higher honor, if you will, or no more sign of respect than to the people that you work with every day, and retire employees that chose to entrust this burden, if you will, to entrust you the opportunity to serve on the retirement board. So I have greatly appreciated working with you there, and it's bad because a lot of times I see... I'll definitely do that anymore, but I really enjoyed that. So this is just on behalf of the Tulare County Employees Retirement Association, an appreciation for your dedicated service. Members of Tulare County Employees Retirement Association, so it's my honor to re-present this, but I wanted to do it here in front of everybody and let you know how much we appreciate that. I'd like to tell you that we will keep you in our prayers, but what I'm really hoping is that you'll keep all of us in your prayers. A lot more opportunity for prayer, if you will, so please remember this, and much success to you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Chairman, Mr. Captain Meisner, before you leave, I'm sure that other members of the board would like to say something, and since you were quicker on the draw than the chairman was, I just interrupted myself. But I just wanted to say my best wishes to you and your retirement, and however, I do see you as a poster child for the problem with early retirement. And that is that I know of no more capable person than you, knowledgeable, experienced. And here you are at your top of your game, and we're losing you. So that is a great loss to Tulare County, but I know it's not a loss because the field you're going to go into is also a great benefit to Tulare County, and so we just want to wish you the best, and thank you sincerely for your years of service to our county.
Yeah, Kevin, I'm happy for you. When I heard about this, I thought, wow, that's what I want to do, maybe when I'm as old as you. I'm going to take a cheap shot.
Next year?
I think it's wonderful, even though you will be greatly missed. What a wonderful opportunity and experience you're going to have in your new adventure. So thank you for your many years of service, and I'll be right behind you, I guess.
Careful what you ask for.
Kevin, I'd just like to say thank you, too, and good luck to you. And I know the Sheriff's Department's going to miss you a great deal, but a man's got to do what he's got to do, and good luck to you, and we'll be, we're behind you all the way.
Thanks, Kevin.
I'm happy to announce that Dr. Valentino was in the building. Board of Supervisors and Chair Alan Oshida. Supervisors and ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be here to introduce an educator who has exemplified the spirit of innovative services to students and adults for 33 years. Through numerous programs at the Tulare County Office of Education and in partnerships with the County of Tulare, Dr. Lorene Valentino has dedicated her career to helping young people, teen mothers, and the most economically disadvantaged adults along the path to success. If there was a group that needed education, training, counseling, or placement, Lorene had the vision and the determination to serve them. People will tell you that Lorene thinks out of the box. My experience, Lorene doesn't even realize there is a box. Over 30 years ago, she started as part of our SEDA program, which provided training and employment for disadvantaged adults. From there, she helped create the Greater Avenues for Independence or the GAIN Program in partnerships with the County Health and Human Services, again, providing welfare recipients with training and employment opportunities. Her Teenage Parenting Program, or TAP, received national attention as it provided education for hundreds of young mothers throughout the county. Most of these TAP programs, now operated by local school districts, still exist today. Another nationally recognized service is the MOVE Program, which has helped over 2,000 families find employment and relocate of areas in the country. Most recently, she helped create the La Sierra Charter Schools, including the La Sierra Military Academy here in Visalia. For students seeking a discipline in a small setting, this was perfect. There are so many other programs I could list, but I have to conclude by saying thank you, Lorene Valentino, on behalf of the thousands of young people, adults, and their families across the nation who live better lives because of the education and training she helped them receive. I present you, Dr. Lorene Valentino.
I want to thank you. This is a great honor for me to receive this, and I also want to say that in order to lead, you must have people to follow you. And I've been very fortunate to have a wonderful staff throughout the years that are willing to follow me into some of those uncharted territories. And also, in order to lead, you must have someone who will get out of your way and let you go. And Mr. Bidak has been exceptional in that regard. And you get to choose your employees, but you don't get to choose your boss, so I have been very, very blessed, and I want to thank you for this honor.
On behalf of Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present you this proclamation honoring your 30 years of public service. You've helped so many people, as Superintendent Bidak has briefly described. Your career has touched and influenced a lot of people, positive side. Now Captain Meisner's met a lot of people, and now he's going to move to the other side that you were. So it's a great honor for the Board of Supervisors to present you this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the best to you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, Lorene, for you, vacate the building. I just wanted to say that, add my thanks to your years of service, and I know, you know, I'm always, I think of the biblical adage that where there is no vision, the people perish. And it is your vision which has led many people to have hope, and that hope has led to better lives, and we want to thank you for that. And I know it's not been without some controversy. I remember the MOVE Program, and the media sometimes characterizing that as shipping off our poor people to somebody else's problems, not realizing that it was totally different program and provided people, they didn't go someplace without the employment there for them. It was a wonderful, is a wonderful program, a great opportunity for people, and I just want to say thank you, and watch out for your husband, he doesn't make you out work in the orange groves now that you're retired, so thanks for coming.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Lorene, Dr. Valentino, having had the opportunity just to get to know you because of this great work has been wonderful for me. You know, when I look at your resume, if someone who didn't know you looked at this resume or this body of work, they would probably not believe it. They would say, nah, you took three or four people's resume and you put it all together. It's that stunning. It's that outstanding. And all of that good work will not go unrewarded, and it's my wish for you that it comes back to you full force, so thank you so much.
If I may, also, you're not done. Don't run out yet. You thought you were getting retired, didn't you? Again, like Connie, as I look over your resume and a couple of things that Jim talked about, the teaching in Teen Mothers La Sierra Academy, I for one know that just that academy has touched the lives of so many and has helped so many get back on, I'll call it, on the beaten path, where it has given them an opportunity to continue education and to straighten up their lives. What a wonderful thing that you've helped create here in our area, and I appreciate it very much. So thank you, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
I would also like to say a few words. In this day and age, the key to our future is people like you, being able to educate people, and education is the key to our future. So if we had more people like you, we could start tearing down our prisons. I really believe that, and I believe that our future's education, and we need more and more people like you. Thank you so much.
Moving to item three, Employee Service Awards. I get the honor to start out as District One with one of the men that I went to high school with, but he was younger than me. Mr. Chairman, let me just brief what we're going to be doing this morning, if I may. Good morning to the chairman and the members of the board. I'd like to start by thanking Judy Wines and Becky Bunning, Becky Buckingham, I'm sure it isn't Betty, Becky Buckingham, for their coordination of this year's Service Awards Program. But at this time, it gives me great pleasure to bring before you employees who are being recognized for their long service with Tulare County. The Service Awards Program recognizes employees who have completed 10 or more years of service, continuous service, during the prior calendar year. We honor these employees for their loyalty, their hard work, and the valuable continuity and historical memory that they provide to their departments and the citizens of this county. Awards for employees who have completed 10 years of service will be presented in the Employees Department. In 2006, 132 employees reached this mark. Beginning with 15 years of service, and for completion of each five additional years of service, the awards are presented today by your Board of Supervisors. There are 53 awards scheduled to be presented. 15 of them are for 25 years of service, three are for 30 years of service, and four are for 35 years of service. Recipients, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your award. Some of the fragile awards may have boxes here that you can pick up from our staff on the way out, so just be careful that you don't break it when we give it to you. And with that, Mr. Chairman? Okay, the first honoree with 35 years of service is Michael Milhouse, Resource Management Agency.
This is the young guy I was talking about.
Next is Jerry Ide, also from the Resource Management Agency with 25 years of service. Linda Hanson Wimp, Probation Department, 25 years of service.
Large perfume.
That was good.
You might ask the auditor controller for the cognac that goes. From the Sheriff's Department, Martin King, 20 years of service. Dennis Hummel, Resource Management Agency, 15 years of service. Scott Fansteele, Resource Management Agency, 15 years of service. Congratulations. Thank you for your years of service, and maybe you'll have as many years as fitting And now we have the presentations from District Two. Supervisor Connie Conway. We begin with Richard Shore, Resource Management Agency, 35 years of service. Jonna Moffett, Health and Human Services Agency, 25 years of service. Eddie Silva, also Resource Management Agency, and also 25 years of service. Ruben gets two? Okay. Jake Torrance, from the Public Defender's Office, 25 years of service. Sherry Lehner, also from the Sheriff's Department, and also 20 years of service. Okay. David Singleton, Sheriff's Department, 20 years of service. Okay, you have the most. You win the prize for having the most presented. Supervisor Phil Cox. And we'll start with Judy Hill from the County Library, 30 years of service. From the Resource Management Agency, Rafael Martinez, 30 years of service. Ian Surveilla. Next is Julian Almanza, Public Defender's Office, 25 years of service. Karen Edwards, Resource Management Agency, 25 years of service. Don Gray, from the Sheriff's Department, 25 years of service. Alisa Padilla, Health and Human Services Agency, 25 years of service. Robert Turner, Resource Management Agency, 25 years of service. Dave Bryant, Resource Management Agency, 20 years of service. Dave Dean, also from the Resource Management Agency, with 20 years of service. Scott Logue, Sheriff's Department, 20 years of service. Long time no see, Scott. Sharon Rotan, Resource Management Agency, 20 years of service. Louis Thomas, probation department, 20 years of service. Mark Van Seal, probation department, 20 years of service. John Weller, Sheriff's Department, 20 years of service. Greg Anderson, Resource Management Agency, 15 years of service. Terry Beebe, County Library, 15 years of service. Mark Clark, Resource Management Agency, 15 years of service. Terry Dill, probation department, 15 years of service. Isusita Martinez Vasquez, Workforce Investment Department, 15 years of service. Thank you for showing up. I worked hard on trying to get your name right. James Rodriguez, Resource Management Agency, 15 years of service. Vivian Timm, Workforce Investment Department, 15 years of service. Jeannie Warren, Resource Management Agency, 15 years of service. Leanne Williams, probation department, 15 years of service. Thank you, Supervisor Cox. Next, we have Supervisor Stephen Worthley. With a few presentations this morning. Jacob Huerta, Sheriff's Department, 25 years of service. Arcadio Ortiz, Resource Management Agency, 25 years of service. Dave Williams, Sheriff's Department, quarter century of service. He's so young-looking, I wanted to make him, you know, sound over. Delia Huerta, probation department, 20 years of service. Linda Sward, Health and Human Services Agency, 20 years of service. That's finished? That's it for you? Thank you, Mr. Worthley. And now we have Supervisor Mike Ennis. And we're going to start with Tony Forner, from the Resource Management Agency, 35 years of service. Also with 35 years of service, with RMA, Andy Perkins. Alfred Keller Halls, also RMA, 30 years of service. Lana Broadhead, Workforce Investment Department, 20 years of service. Shirley Leopard, Sheriff's Department, 20 years of service. Also from the Sheriff's Department, James McKay, 20 years of service. And the last recipient this week, Dennis Pettit, Resource Management Agency, 20 years of service. That concludes the presentations for today. We will present the balance of the awards next week at the board meeting. And at this time, please, let's congratulate all. Ms. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you leave, we...
It's all right.
We'd like to address you.
Just to say thank you, and it's great that five years ago, some of you were here, and you're back. And please keep coming. I'm staggered by the amount of dedication and loyalty to this county, and I am very much appreciative of that. So thank you all very much for the great work that you do on our behalf every day. Thank you.
I did my quick math, 1,070 years. Wow. What a great group of folks you are. Thank you so much. You're usually the people that see all of our constituents, and I want to thank you for your hard work. You're wonderful. Thank you.
Very quickly, I know, obviously, they're anxious to get back to work because they're staying here. But I just want to say that I believe the board does not take at all, take it lightly that you have dedicated so much of your lives to this county. I think the average length of stay in employment these days is something like five years. So the idea that people would stay 15, 20, 25, 30, 35 years in one, working for one county, many of you in different kinds of jobs, and that's why I mentioned about working for a county our size, is the opportunity to have different kinds of opportunities of employment. But we do not take that lightly, and we want to thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts for the work that you do for our county. Obviously, you are the heart and soul of the county, and we want to thank you for what you do for the people who live in this county. Thank you very much.
And I would also like to just thank you, and you are the reason this county moves forward every day, and we depend on you so much. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
I think we really depend on you, and that's why we're so thankful that you've been with us as long as you have. I look out amongst you, and maybe my eyes are 60 years old, but I don't see any of you that are old enough to retire yet. Thank you very much.
Chairman, five-minute break. Five-minute break while we clear the room.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Well, we'll need to send something to the board, because every time we... The issue with the union will be, this is an emergency, we need to do this to ensure that we can provide service. They're not going to complain when they're getting paid overtime and lower than... But it does violate the MOLUs, we do have to make them confer, but because it's an emergency, we won't. We'll just tell them afterwards. And I don't know if we have gone to the board each and every time that... Well, if you had something different that I don't know about that thing, that in all the requests that I have for child support and the others, we went to the board because the MOLUs specifically require us to have 9 to 60 hours before they can get their pay. The board has to make an exception. I don't know why, maybe we just never worried about it anymore. But when we had it in our heart, we went to the board because we had a big fuffle with the child support people. So I guess if your direction is go ahead and do it, we'll just... It was an urgency matter, and we'll tell the unions.
We're going to take a couple more minutes, because the loop bus is here, the bus that transports the kids from Ivanhoe and Goshen into the Visayan community center. So we're going to take a look out, look at the bus. Some people like to put us on it.
Hi, Tracy, this is Ray. Can we put you through to Steve? Bounce. In other words, they're going to get paid, they're not going to have to just accumulate additional compensation. And see how many volunteers we can get, and if we can get them. Don't you be part of the payroll check, you could do it separately. And then see if you get five of these volunteers, you have enough to take them. All right, thanks. But we're prepared to get that email out. Thanks.
That's right. Why do you think Sanders said here?
Unless he runs into me. Unless he runs into me trying to get there. Poor Connie, she's... We're talking about if you have to evacuate quickly, you're going to have to get down.
She can move when she needs to. She doesn't need to.
You can do the consent calendar. Let me get a few more people out of here.
I know. You know, some Kevlar or something lining the desk. Seriously. I'd be mean to shoot it anyway, not you guys.
Okay, we're going to take our consent calendar up at this time. On item number eight, there's a minor change. We appointed Supervisor Alan Ashida as alternate to the local agency formation commission. We're adding the words "as an alter."
I saw that. I thought I was getting off the hook.
Yeah, I was hoping.
And then item ten, we're going to pull item ten. Mr. Cox serves on the first five board. So, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Items five through thirty, absent items ten, and as amended on item eight.
Second. There's a motion, second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
We approve of item ten.
Wait, we've got to wait. I need a second. We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Motion carries four zero four. Hey, gee, you're remarkably fast. Moving to our public hearing, our timed item. Staff?
First Chairman, members of the board, again, my name is George Finney from County Resource Management Agency. Continued public hearing on the appeal filed by Valley Citizens for Water regarding mining conditions approval of the surface mining permit case number PMR zero-two dash zero-zero-two. This is the Quea River South project. This item has been continued a couple of times now for completion of findings, conditions of approval, and other documentations relative to the approval of the project. Last week, we sent over to you a number of documents. I think this is a complete list of all of them. You've got your board resolution, you've got the findings package, the mitigation monitoring reporting plan, the conditions of approval, the Quea South reclamation plan. Also, you should have the financial assurance package, along with a letter from Jim Pompey, manager of the Office of Mining Reclamation Unit regarding revisions to the reclamation plan and finding those are adequate. Since we sent you over that packet, we've a couple more items of communication. First of all, a letter dated June the fourth, two thousand and seven, from W.E. Loudermilk. He's the regional manager for Department of Fish and Game. Do they have copies of this?
Why did they send letters the day before the hearing?
The letter basically comments on mitigation measure three D dash three regarding impacts to the San Joaquin kit fox. Basically, they're asking for clarification on the timing of proposed... Oh, excuse me, on the timing of protocol-level kit fox surveys that was required in the conditions, and that's specifically condition number eighteen. Since that time, Tony Whitmanly of Remy Thomas Moose and Manly has submitted to you, and that's also being handed out, a recommended revisions to condition number eighteen and the mitigation measure three D. These are all very minor clarification types of modifications, therefore, no need to recirculate to take care of that. Basically, it clarifies when the kit fox surveys would be required. And then, secondly, we did receive a June five, two thousand and seven, letter from Caroline Farrell for the Center of Race, Poverty, and Environment, commenting on the findings and conditions of approval. And they've raised a couple of issues. First of all, with regard to flood impacts, they observed that there are no findings or conditions of approval regarding elevating facilities in Flood Zone A. And we would recommend that you add the standard flood condition that is typically applied within Flood Zone As that basically requires conformance with the flood damage prevention ordinance. We don't believe a finding is needed since the one-foot elevation requirement was always part of the project description. They've also commented on three issues with respect to the groundwater impacts. First of all, and they're specifically referring to conditions forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. First of all, they suggested that surrounding property owners should have the option to submit claims directly to the county if they feel their wells have been adversely impacted. If you read condition number forty-three, it suggests that they would have to go through the operator first. Staff's observation is that there's nothing in the conditions that says they cannot go to the county first. What would happen in that case is we would immediately turn it back over to the operator, and then that would trigger condition number forty-three, because then they would have claims from a, from the surrounding property owner that the wells have been affected. So, they would have to respond in accordance with that condition. They also asked that when additional hydrologic studies are called for, if there are claims that groundwater levels have been lowered, that the county not use hydrologists not associated with the proceedings. I, again, that's a judgment call you will have to make, but I, and my feeling is that is inappropriate, because the county would want to retain its own ability to use its own hydrologist in case there was any kind of assessment needed. And finally, there is concern regarding, and this is as expressed in the letter, the failure to provide evidence on how the mitigation, mitigation measures will return water to its historic levels. Again, I must emphasize to the board, this is a thirty-year project. If you read condition number forty-three, it goes to great lengths to explain what actions the county would take to follow up on any valid claims of a impact on groundwater levels. It's just very difficult, I think, and speculative for the county to be requested to provide that kind of analysis, something that might not happen until fifteen years from now. So, again, I, that's my response to the late comments. Again, our recommendations are that you adopt the findings in full package as with the recommendations, with the modifications I've suggested today.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Finney. The matter before the board is agenda item number four. This is a continued public hearing on an appeal by the Valley Citizens for Water regarding the Quea River Rock Surface Mining Permit and Reclamation Plan Application Number PMR zero-two dash zero-zero-two. There was an extensive public testimony and comment on this matter during the evidence portion of the public hearing. The evidence portion of the public hearing was closed on May eighth, two thousand and seven. For due process reasons, this board may not consider any new information, testimony, or evidence on the permit application at this time. In addition to the previous due process proceedings on the permit application, the Ralph M. Brown Act provides that any member of the public may comment on any matter on the board's agenda at any regular meeting of the board. The matter before the board today is only, only the proposed resolution of a decision. No new evidence, testimony, or information on the permit application or the project itself will be taken at this time. Any member of the public wishing to comment on this matter will be allowed three minutes. The only exception to this limit will be at the sole discretion of the chairman. Individuals not, individuals will not be allowed to yield their time to others. These comments will be timed. Each speaker starts his or her statement, the clerk of the board will start a clock or timer. The amount of time available will count down in the lower right-hand corner of the screen directly over the board's seats and visible to the public. At the end of the allotted time, a buzzer will sound, and please finish your statement at that time. Please address any questions to me, the chairman, instead of to any individual supervisors, the county staff, the applicant, any consultants on this project, or any member of the public. If appropriate, we will ask for any responses we believe needed. Does anyone want to comment on this matter at this time? Please identify yourself and give us your address.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Whit Manly. I'm with Remy Thomas Moose and Manly, law firm located at four fifty-five Capitol Mall in Sacramento. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Just for the record, Mr. Finney suggested a couple of revisions to conditions of approval. We understand those revisions. We endorse them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dell Strange. My address is two zero eight seven zero Avenue three twenty-two, Woodlake, California. And I'm commenting regarding the project before you, commenting specifically on the documents that were recently released last week and are before you today. The SEQA findings of fact are, some of the statements are absolutely false, and there is no guarantee that the Quea Delta Water Conservation District will manage this project into perpetuity post-reclamation. The proposed recharge system is totally inadequate, as has clearly been proven by the existing operation, and the results are significant adverse impacts on the project and on the environment. Our vital water resources are of top priority to the county, and I'm sure you're aware of that. Water resources are vital and take priority over aggregate, which can be found locally in the foothills. Alternative number six, the Red Mountain alternative, has been proposed and continues to be as the environmentally superior alternative. It's very clear. It has no impacts on water resources flooding or anything like that. It has less impacts than the proposed site and must be considered by your board before taking any further action on this project. Bacon Hill Project likewise is second in line, and it is also viable and can easily outweigh the significant impacts of the existing proposed operation. That is, it'll have less impacts. I submit this written information for your study and understanding before you make decision today on this project. The hard rock sites that I have mentioned are the preferred alternatives under SEQA and must be considered. I suggest that for all of the reasons that are stated in this document and what I've presented to you today, the six documents that were just released a few days ago, that neither you nor I nor anyone else has had the time to carefully study what all is stated in those very detailed documents and understand fully what we're doing. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Good morning, board members. My name is Julie Bigum. The address is P.O. Box two ninety-one in Woodlake, California. I'm here to comment on the documents that were received last week. I have asked Ann Chapman now twice for an addendum of the changes to the reclamation plan, and I was told that we would not receive them until probably after this hearing. We do not know what the changes are. We do not know how the board member can adopt a reclamation plan that it hasn't read. And we would like to be able to comment on the said document after we receive such addendum changes. It is ludicrous to try to read both documents side by side to find or try to figure out what the changes are, and the changes, when they were made, should have been written down and given to us as an addendum. The conditions of approval, number one, and I just want to say, Valley Citizens for Water's comments on the conditions of approval does not mean that Valley Citizens for Water is endorsing this proposed project in any way, shape, or form. Condition number one states that no work other than maintenance may occur on Sundays. Condition number two states that mining operations and rock crushing may be permitted on Sundays. There needs to be some clarification. This is very ambiguous. Condition number six needs to include such language as regards to the holes and the gaps in the berm on the north side. Condition number twelve is totally irrelevant since Valley Citizens for Water asked about this on May twenty-second, and we're told that the Williamson Act will be canceled. Recision and cancellation are two different things. The COA does not reflect what we were told on May twenty-second. On condition number thirty-eight, the last sentence reads, "Any discharge to surface water." Any discharge should be replaced with the words "storm water." Condition forty-two and forty-seven are in direct conflict and need to be revised. Condition number forty-seven... Condition number 47 says that no groundwater shall be discharged to surface water. Condition 42 says, "Before discharging any dewatered affluent, seepage and storm waters to body of surface water." Seepage needs to be removed. And I see that I'm running out of time. I've got a few other points, but I will give that to the clerk of the board. Thank you very much for your time.
George, do you have any further comments on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Close to comment period. Do you have this on discuss with close session if any of the board members feel that... Oh, excuse me.
Would you indulge me for one minute? This is, for the record, Whit Manley once again. I want you to know, I guess I have to express some level of frustration. This now is the second hearing in a row in which I've been handed lengthy letters from the opponents of this project during the public hearing, and it's obvious to me that this is a strategy that's calculated simply to delay. That is manifestly the strategy that's at work here. Now, having said that, I have read this 10-page letter that Mr. Strange handed to you at the time that he approached the podium. There is nothing in this letter that has not been ventilated ad nauseam. So I encourage you to ask whatever questions you may have, but I don't regard this letter or Ms. Bigum's comments as justifying a continuance. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no need for close session.
You do?
I have no need for close session.
Okay. Is the board ready to reach a final decision on this matter? And since Supervisor Ennis did not participate in earlier actions on this matter, he will be abstaining?
Mr. Chair, I would motion to adopt, and I'll go ahead and read it here, adopt resolution of findings denying the appeal filed by Valley Citizens for Water regarding the Planning Commission's approval of surface mining permit number PMR-02-002. And number two certify, the board has reviewed and considered the information contained in the final revised environmental impact report and the previous final environmental impact report as a single integrated document prepared for PMR-02-002. Approval of the FREIR and FEIR for the Quea South Project, SCH 2002-051039, as being in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and adoption of project findings and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and a statement of overriding considerations. And three, approve the surface mining permit and reclamation plan, PMR-02-002, subject to conditions and mitigation measures with minor changes that were made this morning, as suggested by Mr. Finney.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion carries, four yes votes and one abstention. Thank you very much. Moving to item 31.
Mr. Chair?
We're going to take a minute now. We're going to go... Yes?
This item is on your board's closed session agenda, item C, and I would recommend that your board go to close session before discussing this in the session.
Okay. Been recommended by council that we go to close session before Mr. Flick makes his
You want a copy of this one? Okay, let me go. Both of them? Is that what you said, both of you?
Okay, we're going to take up item 31. Anything else? You want to have an interpretation? Well, you want to do your...
According to Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Captain Dell Flick for the Tulare County Sheriff's Department, before you on item 31, requesting the board to, the modifications to the former agreements of understanding working with the cities in the SAFE grant that was just recently obtained in April, and approved by the board to accept that $639,000 grant to work with sexual offenders. And our purpose is to streamline some of the language and ask that you might help us do that with regards to those contracts.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I would move that we authorize the sheriff to sign and enter into a new operational agreement with local cities who wish to participate in the SAFE program as, as prepared by our county council, approved by council.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And moving to item 32.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Brew, Assistant Director of Transportation at the Resource Management Agency. Item 32 is a request for your board to designate four-way stop intersection at two location, Road 140 at Avenue 256 and Avenue 280 at Road 180, and also authorize installation of stop sign at all entrance to these intersection. Currently, both of these intersections are two-way stop intersection, traffic stop on Avenue 256 and Road 180. Engineering studies show that both intersection have met criteria for installation of traffic signals. RMA Transportation Branch receive grant funding for the installation of traffic signal on Road 140 and Avenue 256. Currently planned and specs are being prepared with construction expected within a year. We have also applied to the state for the program grant for signal installation at Avenue 280 and Road 180. Now, the grant application is pending at this time. If grant fundings are awarded for this project, construction can be completed within 18 months. The California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Device states, "Where traffic control signal are justified, the multi-way stop is an interim measure that can be installed quickly to control traffic while arrangement are being made for installation of traffic signal." Based on this, staff recommends that four-way stops be established at these intersections.
Thank you. Any questions?
Quick, quick one, Mr. Chair. John, we first go out, we have big double signs with a little blinking light. I notice whenever you see some new signs, they double them up, put a little yellow light on there to blink so that the people can, you know, they're going to be aware of that new sign. You can do something like that.
Yes, Supervisor Cox, we're planning to do that on both location, particularly on Road 140 with high traffic volume through there and also Avenue 280.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the pictures. For a city folk, this is, this is needed.
I was just hoping I could add a couple more, but I guess I can't.
256, well, yeah, 256 and 65 is one I've been asked about.
Any further questions?
No, no. It's good.
Do you like to speak to this matter, Ms. Hobbs? Okay. I entertain a motion for approval.
Approval.
Moved. Seconded. Moved and seconded. Cast your vote. Vote passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Mr. Brew, I'll be asking you to come back here on Visaya Road in Mariposa in the near future.
We'd be glad to do that.
256 and 65.
I have a list to offer it to you.
Don't have any of this.
Okay, moving to public comments. Is there anybody wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to board matters, Supervisor Ennis.
Well, the only thing that I can talk about probably is my little trip to Kennedy Meadows, the furthest outpost in Tulare County. And it was quite an experience. Would have been a little shorter if I took the 14 turnoff instead of going all the way into Kramer Junction, but it was, it was a nice trip. My wife Diane went with me, and we met all the folks up there and listened to all their concerns, and of course, they're the same as anybody that's in the mountain areas. They're concerned about sheriff, fire, roads. Of course, the only roads are the paved roads that go through there. Everything else is dirt. So it's quite, it's quite a place. They don't have any electricity. It's all either solar or butane or wind, wind-operated electric devices. But nice community. It was nice and cool up there, had a nice lunch, and enjoyed the fellowship of the day and meeting everybody. So that was all I have to say.
You want to talk about your fires, huh?
Supervisor Workley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As your representative on the San Joaquin Valley Air Pushing Control District, I have received a phone call from our lobbyists, who happens to be the lobbyists for our county as well, and I will be contacting the various chairman of the counties within our air basin, which is San Joaquin from the north down to Kern County in the south, requesting, and I hereby requesting our chairman... requesting our chairman, that you re-contact our delegation and the governor's office, weighing in our opposition on SB seven-one-nine, the Machado Bill, and in previous iterations of this bill, it was SB nine-nine-nine, which is easier to remember, but this is seven-one-nine. This would change the composition of the air board, adding three new city members and two public members that would be appointed by the governor. You know, it's our contention that, one, it's unnecessary, the air board is doing a very credible job in cleaning up our air, and secondarily, that this will make it actually more difficult to get our job done because adding members who are not accountable, especially the public members, not accountable to the electorate of our, of San Joaquin Valley. And then tied to that is Senate Bill two forty, the Flores Bill, which is a funding mechanism to help clean up our air, but it increases, it imposes a surcharge of three hundred dollars on every stationary, indirect, and area-wide sources of pollution, which are already being charged to provide, in other words, they have to hack, go to the air board in order to get permission to operate or to construct, and so this is an addition to what they're already paying, and also would require a thirty-dollar increase on all vehicle registration fees of every owner of vehicles in the San Joaquin Valley. And we are, we are taking, we will be taking this to the board, the air board, for a position of either opposition or support of either bills. This time, I'm requesting that we would not support the Flores Bill as it is currently tied to the Machado Bill, for one thing. In other words, the Flores Bill doesn't pass unless Machado's Bill, SB nine-seven-nineteen, passed, so it needs to be decoupled, and then there's some thought that it might be better if we're going to ask people to pay thirty dollars and increase their vehicle registration fees, that we give them the opportunity to weigh in on that, that is, that they would actually go to a boat on that and let people decide whether or not they want to support that, as opposed to having it crammed on, down their throats. And so that's, that's going to be the nature of my phone calls to the various chairman. We're also asking that, that the boards of supervisors contact the local cities who are similarly concerned about these changes of composition of the board, and asking them to also contact the governor's office and their delegation. This, this thing is, has been moving along and it's, our concern is that we've been able to stop it for several years now, but our concern is that this year may be more difficult the way things are turning out. So that's, that's my report, and appreciate your support. Stick it to it.
Mr. Chair, one thing, and then I would like, if there's time, to have our, our fire chief come up and give us a brief report on, on the fires, so I'll yield one of my minutes to him. Yesterday at the ribbon cutting, this is the actual ribbon that was cut for the loop bus that we just viewed, and I proudly displayed the sticker that will be placed on the county's bus once the wrap is complete, it'll be on the rear and then on the side where the city of Visaya had their city emblem, this will be, replace that, showing that this is actually the first Measure R-funded project for the county. So very excited about that bus route starting, and the children are just totally excited too. I spent last week in, at the Goshen and Ivanhoe Elementary Schools with kids, showing them the bus, and they had a blast, and there, it's going to be a wonderful program to get those kids off the streets and, and into recreation centers.
Do you mind if we move fire chief under my comments, it was going to, part of my comments?
That's fine, I just, I'd like to hear an update for whoever it comes from, is fine.
Oh, we'll try to be as quick as possible, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, we signed a contract with the new executive director for CSAC. I think many of you are familiar with him, Mr. Paul McIntosh, who, McIntosh, who is the CAO at Butte County.
Oh, wow.
As of July first, will be the new executive director for CSAC. He brings a world of experience, a great background for all that needs to go on, he's a fighter, which may or may not work in our favor, but, oh, well. I mean, he was, he's practically the father of realignment, so I think it would be great to, to have a Paul on board. Just received some information, I know the CAO has seen this all too, about the changes they're trying to make in the Clean Water Act that would change waters from listed as navigable to waters of the United, of the US, whatever the heck that means. I just really think that we need to.
Every drop of rain that falls.
Even though we don't have any water currently to argue about, or there's not much to argue about, I just, I can't imagine how that would benefit anybody, so I would like, Mr. Chairman, us to look into that, contact our congressional representatives and senators, and also send a letter on this board's behalf to the three, what are they, the introducers of the bill. Just like to note that the legislature is very busy and definitely working on our behalf, if you detect a note of cynicism in my tone, I think everybody knows why. I had an opportunity to be in Rancho Cucamonga last Thursday for a pension benefits commission. It was focused on, on health care, but as we proceed with these meetings and have testimony throughout the state from retirees and retirements, there are so many individual retirement-type programs, individual programs for, I mean, each program is different for the retiree, even members of PERS, you know, it varies depending on, as you know, the local government's take on that. So one thing that is definitely coming out in all of these hearings is health care reform, health care reform, health care reform. There's been a big emphasis put that until we reform health care, it will be difficult to look adequately at, at pension benefits reform. The two things will probably go together, and the governor knew what he was doing when he put both of these items on the table, because they, they really do complement each other. I had an opportunity last Wednesday to go with Congressman Nunes on the Ag Tour, I know some of you have gone with him in the years past, there were some that attended that have also been in the past and felt this was the best one so far, very interesting. It reminded me of back in the day, and Supervisor Worley, you may have been the only other supervisor on this board when we, when I tried to start this program of maybe once a month, this board going in to the various districts and examining some of the facilities and just looking at what's out there, it was an eye-opener for me. I know that, I scheduled one of those tours for the board, you scheduled one of those tours for the board, as I say, I don't believe these three board members were here when I got off on that rant and wanted to go out and, and look at the districts closely and let each individual supervisor highlight an area of importance in their district. I would sure like us to think about that again.
I'll never forget Haagen-Dazs ice cream as long as I live.
I thought I started it off on a good note by taking all y'all to Haagen-Dazs. I mean, I can wait till, God willing, I become chairman in January to re-initiate this, this, but I'm just planting the seed this morning that, I actually, a couple of those visit stops were in your district, Supervisor, also in yours, Supervisor Ashida, in fact, I think we were in everybody's district but mine on this Ag Tour, and, and it was great. And it wasn't just Ag, it was businesses and, and items of interest, so I'm planting that seed. If we don't start it now, I look forward to starting it back up with you guys next January. And the only other thing I have is this Thursday, I'll be participating in a meeting with Secretary Kawamura, so I will have opportunity to speak with him about other issues, but it will be an energy forum in Sacramento hosted by Secretary Kawamura's office. It will be a, a couple hours of meeting with the twenty-five by twenty-five, and then a, one of the items that the California Partnership funded was a clean energy office, some seed grant money, we didn't totally fund it, but we gave seed grant money towards a clean energy office, and so this will be an energy forum on both issues hosted by Secretary Kawamura, and I will be there Thursday participating in that. Also has an opportunity to meet with the governor and some of his staff, so I'll have reports when I get back on Friday. Yes, I know.
I'll be in Sacramento at the same meeting on Thursday with the secretary. I'd like to thank Supervisor Cox for ramrodding the loop bus. I think, I'm very encouraged that it's going to work out very well, hopefully we can transfer this, if it's successful, to other areas in the county. I had the pleasure last week of addressing the new fire department of Tulare County, and there's quite a mixture of experience and age, and I'd like the fire chief to please give us a little update.
Good morning, Board. Steve Sunderland, Tulare County Fire Department. A week ago today, we had sixty-nine bright, shiny faces, some a little longer and whiter than others, but nonetheless bright and shiny, show up as fire lieutenants and fire captains to staff the Tulare County Fire Department beginning July first. I'd made a comment in our Rotary meeting this morning that they even came back yesterday after a weekend away. So we are indeed off to the races and off to better days for fire service in Tulare County from where I sit and view the world. Supervisor Cox, the fires in Tulare County. Chairman Ashida accompanied me to the Three Rivers Fire about a week and a half ago. That was an intentionally set fire for a brief period. Cherokee Oaks subdivision was considered a structure threat, was soon determined not to be such a significant structure threat, but we did have a contingent of county equipment and county-funded staff make a big move to the foothill community of Three Rivers in the vein of structure protection. The fire in Supervisor Ennis's district, actually two, the Deer Creek Fire, the threat there was to the watershed, there, there was no threat to improvements of, of any kind other than, like I said, just, it was a watershed issue, and it's, to my understanding, completely contained and controlled in, in pretty much a, a one or two-engine type of a patrol mode for the remainder of its, its life. The fire in the further south and further eastern corner of the county, I'm not sure what the name of it is, I, I think it's exceeded two thousand acres at this time, it's a federally Forest Service managed fire. The Forest Service recognizes the county's role in the way of structure and improvement protection, and the county's indeed got resources there to accommodate that. Now, to, to the level of need, I think they have accommodated some evacuation issues with campgrounds and mobile homes and some recreational-type residences. I haven't heard of any more resource orders coming in for local government engines to, to boost the element of structure protection, but in the event that it does, we'll, we'll step up, as will the municipal departments, and, and contribute to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I'll want to talk to you later about the nightly fires I'm hearing, I was in Alpa last night. And they.
Barbecue.
They're, yeah, they're.
Warming fires.
They're, they, according to them, they're burning trash and garbage every night, and so I would love to have an opportunity to speak with you about that.
For a thing.
So we'll just call it the Alpa Fire for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, council, do we have a need for closed session?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. If I may, before I announce that, I would like to let your board know that I will be in Sacramento on Friday, two of you were there on Thursday, meeting with CSAC's, I believe it's called a working group rather than a subcommittee regarding climate change, and assisting in developing a position paper regarding regulations that will institute AB thirty-two, which nobody really knows what it means, so we're going to try and figure that out.
Is that the climate change in Sacramento, or?
I don't think anyone knows exactly what it is, but I wanted to let you know that I will be doing that, and I'll be happy to report back to you if you have any particular interest. You have items A through J on your closed session agenda, item B is off agenda, I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you. Thank you for your attendance. They're warming fires. It's a smores party.
Some guys cooking over gas tanks.
I said, there goes, I said, there goes, there goes the town, they're burning it down.
Yeah.
See, they're burning trash.
Well, I got to call Tully Trash and see if he's actually able to pick any trash up.
How are you?
And so you know what their suggestion is? Is that we have a community meeting and tell these people what the rules and what the laws are in this country? That's exact quote, "in this country." And I said, well, you know, I'm happy to help you with that idea, the problem is usually at those types of meetings, if you start a burning, they don't come.